Before we officially start, I just want to say I'm so excited to see such a huge audience for the Arts and Culture Commission meeting. Thank you for being here. This is the regular meeting with the Arts and Culture Commission. Today is Thursday, March 21st, 2024. Seeing a quorum, this meeting is officially called to order. Madam Recording Secretary, please take roll call. Commissioner McNair?
Here.
Commissioner Russell?
Here.
Commissioner Wu?
Here.
Commissioner Lopez Guerra? Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Thank you. We have quorum. Thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. All right. At this time, members of the public may address the Arts and Culture Commission regarding any non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the committee. No action may be taken on non-agenda items unless authorized by law. Madam Recording Secretary, does the public have any comments they wish to share with the commission? Please know that you have three minutes to speak.
No public speakers.
Wonderful. Then moving on to the consent calendar. This is the time for the commission to consider matters under consent calendar, items number one and two. Do I have a motion to consider items one and two?
I motion.
I second.
Okay. Did you get that, Madam Recording Secretary? Perfect. Do we have any discussion on those count, those items?
I need a second.
Oh, it was Commissioner Russell.
You second. Thank you.
Sorry. My bad. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none? Then let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Keep staying. The motion passes. Now we're going to move on to our work-study session. We have three items under our work-study session tonight. Please note that there will be no motion or action taken on these items. The first item under work-study session is investing in the Artist Grants 22, 23, 24 Grant Presentations, the grantee presentations. So, thank you, Tran. Will you please introduce our guests?
Yes, thank you, Chair McNair. It's my honor to bring forth the fun part of this meeting. So I'd like to welcome the first organization to present breath of, receiving an artist grant, Breath of Fire Latina Theater Ensemble, given by Sarah Guerrero, founding artistic director. And Moises Vasquez, who will be accompanying with the guitar.
And Board Chair Adriana Alba.
Board Chair Adriana, thank you.
Well, so thank you. So again, we are Breath of Fire Latina Theater Ensemble. Our mission is to support the work and enrich the lives of Latinas in the visual and performing arts. Our vision is develop, incubate, and produce work that reflects, impacts, and empowers the Latinx community. We believe in the transformative power of theater and aim to raise awareness of critical issues in the community, entertain and challenge, foster cross-cultural understanding, and be a catalyst for personal healing, just, and healing and social justice. And these are a list, if we can go to the next slide, a list of our recognitions. If you, so again, one of them is Santa Ana. We just recently won Best Play for its COVID monologues with the International Latino Book Awards. So that was one of our projects that we did during the pandemic. Next we have.
So we are very lucky to be resident artists in the Grand Central Art Center with, and partners with Cal State Fullerton. We're also been a member of the Orange County Network of Ensemble Theaters since 2020, the Dramatist Guild, the Artistic Directors of Greater Los Angeles, and the Latinx Theater Alliance. Our partnerships also include the Center Theater Group, Dramatist Guild, UC Irvine Claire Trevor School of the Arts, and Brown Paper Bag Company, Cal State Fullerton, UMass Amherst, Santa Ana High School, Los Amigos High School Theater, Lobos Poetry, South Coast Rep, Black Student Union of GGHs, and many, many others. So we're really excited about the project that we're about to present to you because it brings all our communities and our affiliations together.
These are some of our grant awards, including Revive Santana Artist Grants. So thank you. And we were one of the 52 companies throughout the country, including Puerto Rico, to receive the National Latinx Theater Initiative Award, which is a two-year grant that allows us to employ our artists. Now, let's move on to Santana, Cantos, Cuentos, and Corridos. Next one?
So like I said, the Santana Cantos, Cuentos, y Corridos helps us to bring together all the various communities and affiliations that we belong to and that we're a part of. It will be musically-driven theatrical reimagining of untold stories and peoples, the history and the stories of Santana from the heart. It'll be a way through workshopping and community gatherings to build and uplift our city spirit and to help residents connect through creativity, storytelling, and song.
And next slide. We'll be doing, we'll be featuring up to 15 songs that'll come out of our process of past, current, and new writers that have lived, worked, and or went to school in Santana. Experience in songwriting is not required. The launch will begin like today and conclude by late summer of this year. Workshop, studio, rehearsal process, and presentations will take place within the framework.
So Breath of Fire Santana Corrido Stories of the Heart, they'll be presented free to the public up to three times at the Wayward Theater Space and Grand Central Art Center and building in downtown Santa Ana. And each corrido will provide a musically-driven theatrical reimagining of untold stories, individual stories, as well as community stories and historical moments from the city of Santa Ana.
And of course, lead artists include myself, Sarah Guerrero, Diana Burbano, our literary director, songwriter, musical theater specialist, Moises Vasquez, who's here with us today, ensemble composer, music director, Melanie Qupons, who is our resident director and dramaturg, and Elisa Gonzalez from UMass Amherst, who's a resident artist and voice coach, who is originally from Southern California. Oh, go ahead.
And it will obviously be supported also through our fabulous board of directors that is entirely volunteer-driven, and we're very excited. Thank you so much.
And we're gonna play a little song, if it's remaining our time.
Santana querida de mi corazón. Tú eres la ciudad de mi adoración. Yo nunca me olvido de dónde soy. Te llevo, te llevo en el corazón. Vamos a la cuatro, a tirar vacilo. Pa' estar con mi gente, no hay un lugar mejor. Suena la jarana, suena el marimbol. Suena son del centro, entonando un son. Qué bonita Santana. Qué bonita Santana, sí señor. Qué bonita es, qué bonita es. I'm chasing a paletero, and far away I can hear an elotero. Mi gente trying to make ends meet, selling their goods pa' la renta y pa' vivir. Don't wanna hear about the problems for once. Don't wanna hear about the crime. I wanna hear about the theater and the music and the beautiful murals on the wall. Beautiful jacka and the tree. Green parrots visit us with their song. Mi gente incansable, que lucha por ver cambios. Mi gente de Santana es de valiente corazón. Qué bonita Santana. Qué bonita Santana, sí señor. Qué bonita es, qué bonita es. Qué bonita Santana.
Wow, thank you so much. That was unexpectedly emotional for me. And thank you again. Everybody's welcome to continue staying and listen to everybody's presentation, or if you need to, yes, if you have to leave, it's okay too. All right, next is, the organization is Orange County School of the Arts, given by Brian Stevens, Director of Community Engagement, and his group of student dancers.
Hello. Hello, everyone. Thank you for the invite to be here today to present on our festival that was graciously funded by this commission with Revive Santa Ana. So we're very grateful to be here today to share with you how it went. And then a little bit, I'll step out of the way so you can see the fun stuff, which is the students' performance, one of the performance groups at the festival. The overview for today, we just want to share a couple of high-level highlights of how the festival went for us. We'd love to share a little bit about the experience, the intention, how we designed the event so it could maximize our connection to the community, as well as a vision for next year. So, the festival itself was an all-day community event festival. This was the first time we'd ever done anything like this, where we took the whole day on a Saturday, and we created arts experiences for kids as young as, as three, as old as 18, and we held space for them on our campus. And we decided to, we wanted to hold space for arts experiences for kids that they could just opt into with their families. So a whole day-long festival filled with performance. And, and the intrinsic value of Revive Santa Ana allowed us to engage with vendors from the community, engage with other organizations from the community, to provide this exceptional experience. As, if you go to the next slide, you'll see one of the events that we had, which was just, you know, it, it made my young eight-year-old heart sing, was creating a mock X-Wing Pilot demo, so kids could get experience. So that's one of our participants there pretending he was flying an X-Wing for, for a period of five minutes. All the events were calibrated for kids of all levels and abilities. And as you'll be seeing, student performances from OSHA, as well as some of our community partners from Osol, OSEA, and Dragon Kim Foundation, as, as well as some very, very delicious food from our vendors in the community. If you go to the next slide, we had 14 unique themed play areas. You saw the green screen experience. We themed them after OSHA's 19 different conservatories. Not all 19, there weren't 19 different areas, but that sort of speaks to the level of specialization which each of the rooms. So the kids could make nokey in one room. They could learn about Ballet Fóliculico. We had a cocoa experience in another room, and so much more. Each of the rooms, the idea was we wanted to give kids this takeaway. And all of us go to these events, and it could be the odd pamphlet and pencil that finds its way in some parent's car or car seat. But we wanted to make sure that it was intentional. So the idea was we wanted to give them a takeaway so you could do the art once you've left. That this is a continuation or a start to your journey, and this is something that you could do beyond here. You can create art anywhere. If you go to the next slide, as I mentioned before, all these events were calibrated for kids of all skill levels and abilities. We worked with Pretend City in close collaboration and sharing as a thought partner in this process to see which of our events or how we can modify events so that way kids that are sensory-sensitive, for instance, or might require other accommodations or just need other forms of stimulation or regulation in an arts activity, that we would hold space for that. So each of the events was made with that in mind. We created a quiet space for kiddos to, to center. We had sensory bags. We created sensory bags for families that might have forgotten their own fidgets or headphones. And we, at the beginning of our event, we also tailored it to creating a magic hour for families that did, were inclined to declare that they were sensory-sensitive or just required those accommodations. Everything was, sound was muted for that hour, and everybody, it allowed them to enter into the event in a very, I would say, friendly manner. If you go to the next slide, we had over 1,500 attendees, 976 families, with wide ranges represented, but the largest group was ages five to six. It was fantastic. The top three cities of families who attended, we advertised in so many different areas in, in close partnership with the city hall and other local companies. And Santa Ana was one of our top three cities of attendees that came. So we really saw the impact we were having on that day and seeing that with the families there. It was, it was exceptional. If you go to the next slide, our vision for next year, it, it, it got to the point where we were experiencing on that Saturday, it's like, we have to do this again. We have to do this again. So our, obviously, we want to improve our overall engagement numbers. We want to expand the opportunities for, for kiddos and increase our capacity for accommodations for children with disabilities. And we want to develop additional outreach opportunities to Santa Ana schools and students, and incorporation of support personnel for children in special needs. So leveraging partnerships with, say, Chalk Hospital for their support of occupational therapists, speech pathologists, et cetera, just so that on that day, art can be for everyone, and it could be a fun day of play for all. And finally, I think this next slide is the fun one. So now it's my pleasure to introduce our director of a student performance group, Las Estrellas, Ms. Lilia Munies.
Hello, thank you, everyone, again. My name is Lilia Munies. I'm the Ballet Fóliculico instructor at Orange County School of the Arts. And I'll be introducing two of my very talented students, Jimena and Fabian, doing the very traditional, traditional and popular dance, La Negra.
One second. Chairperson McNair, if you'd like to come around, and then you'll be on camera, and you can perform.
Thank you, Brian, and, and good team. I, I did actually had the pleasure of attending that event, and it was very well organized. Very nice. Okay, and next up is Lyric Opera of Orange County by Diane Farrell, founding artistic director.
Can I be brave, Bianca, and ask if this works? Does it work, you think? Let's find out. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for, oh, it does work. I'm so excited. Thank you so much for letting me have the opportunity to come say hello this evening. And my name is Diana Farrell. I am the founding artistic director and executive director of Lyric Opera of Orange County. I practice saying this all very fast so I can get to my fun part, too. I'm gonna kind of blow through all of these slides really fast because I want to get to the good part. But I wanted to take a moment, for those of you who I haven't had the opportunity to meet yet, to introduce ourselves. We are your hometown opera company in Orange County. I, I wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude for your support on our upcoming Mother's Day weekend performances of Hansel and Gretel, the Yost Theater in the beautiful arts district of downtown Santa Ana. This is going to be a truly exciting experience, hopefully not just for our audiences, but for us as an organization as we grow. In this original Spanglish edition of Hansel and Gretel, we are taking classic opera stories and tunes that everyone is familiar with, but we're making them accessible for modern audiences by placing them in English and Spanish language, by placing them in a more familiar setting perhaps than the dark forests of Germany for our participants. We're so lucky to have SAUSD students onstage with our professionals who are coming in from all over the world for our orchestra and our cast. But more exciting than that, knowing this was supposed to be an interactive experience, the investing in the Artist Grants allows us to subsidize the cost of tickets, bringing in 453 tickets to families local to Santa Ana to experience the opera for the first time. And not only that, we've worked really hard in the last couple months to come up with ways to make it interactive for the students and the children who are going to be there. And we have big plans to get them up onstage and in the action throughout the show. So without rehearsals, they will be part of the magic. And that is really setting the tone of what we do to help grow future audiences and artists alike. So again, I'm gonna go really fast over this next part. This is just a brief history of who we are. When I moved out here about 10 years ago, I was a working singer, and there weren't that many opportunities. I was driving up to LA and San Diego, and there was not a place for me to perform as an artist. I was working for a dentist to help pay that California rent. And after a few years, I got really sick of waiting around to find opportunities. So I decided, let's just do it ourselves. And so in the last seven years, we started with a fiscal sponsor with a local organization and applied and got our own 501(c)(3). And this has been my full-time gig since 2019, excellent timing, if you ask me. And we did our first full production 10 years after Upper Pacific shut its doors. So we really wanted to find a way to fill that void in the community, but make sure that our community felt that they didn't need to have expensive box seats in a gigantic auditorium to experience this art form. In the last few years, we've put on over 25 concerts, produced 13 fully staged operas, hosted dozens of development programs, contests giving away scholarships to emerging artists and young artists, launched full range of in-school and camp programs for children, and offered a range of adult education programs that have been delivered around the county. I'm no longer working in a dental office to pay the bills. I'm just to get to do art full-time, which I'm, I feel very lucky to do. But as the organization grows, we are finding not just success with our regional partners, and this is just a brief list, which I won't read through for you, but also gaining some very wonderful recognition across the country as an opera organization. We are now a professional-level opera America organization, which is an honor only 180 companies across the United States have the honor of. And we were asked to join after demonstrating our commitment to professionalism, diversity, education, and ambassadorship through our art form. So we're really proud to bring that back to Orange County. Some of the awards that we've, and grants that we've been lucky to receive over the years, including from this wonderful commission to help present Hansel and E. Gretel. Like I said, I want to get to the fun part, but I want to thank you because this has been such an incredible opportunity for us as an organization to reach new audiences. And it's also helped us learn a lot about what we need as for our own infrastructure to continue growing and to keep this exponential excitement kind of moving along. So, let me just tell you that ultimately, with the support of folks like you, we are going to promise to continue bringing new and creative programs that make opera relevant, accessible, and fun for everyone, create more arts education programs in the schools for OC's youth and young children, engaging performance opportunities for youth and young artists in our local summer programs, and hopefully many more exciting collaborations with other OC cities and organizations. Please come join us on Mother's Day. There's takeaways with scan codes for free tickets to be reserved now. We just started sharing this, and we already have 100 tickets gone and reserved two months in advance. And I want to show you what it is. Oh, no, I hope it's there. Oh, no video. Oh, no. Oh, my gosh, it's here. So for those of you who have never had the opportunity to see what it is we do, I'd like to give you a little taste from the last few years of our professional artists who are coming to us from all over the county and now the state, as well as local children who we've been able to work with in our productions. I'll let you press play on that, Bianca. Thank you. I could just stand here and sing for you, but it wouldn't be as exciting, I promise. It is on YouTube. OC, yeah, let me make sure it's viewable. I can always email you the link, Bianca, as well, if that's quicker. Feel it, it's gonna happen. Yep, right there, Meet Lucy, underneath. Yep. That first one, that's okay. With the millions of faces. So this is a little highlight reel for you. I know, I was gonna say, and this is the show. Please take a minute, go visit us online. It's okay. It's okay. Thank you so much. Come and hear it live. Opera is meant to be heard live anyway. We're so excited to get the kids involved, and thank you so much for your support in this big effort. Appreciate it so much. See you soon.
Thank you, Diana. For the commissioners, I could email you her presentation so that you can click and listen on your own, which has probably worked out because it's longer. And for everybody else, there is flyers up here that has the QR code where you can reserve your free tickets. And if you want to take as many as you want to spread the word, that'd be great. Okay, so thank you, Diana. Next is the Orange County Educational Arts Academy by Pedro Llorente, School Director, and Dustin Alexander, Library and Media Specialist.
Good afternoon. First, we wanted to thank you all for allowing us to make this project happen, and we look forward to collaborating with you in the far future. So this is our collaboration with the city. It's called I Contain Multitudes. And just a quick little origin behind I Contain Multitudes is about a few months ago, closer to a year ago, online, there was a viral hit that happened where poems from Walt Whitman, including the words "I contain multitudes" had really resonated with students of middle school age. It was a voice for not just all of middle school, but young girls finally having an opportunity to connect ironically to something that most students would want to avoid in class, but it was just something that really spoke to who they were, the parts that we don't always see, even when we work in the school or in the city of our youth. But it was very insightful in that that age group really informs the changes in society, how we talk, the things online, just everything. It really moves with this generation. And we found that this generation and our own community had quite a lot to say, if you wanted to move to the next slide. So this performance will be at the Irvine Barclay Theater on April 9th at So this performance will be at the Irvine Barclay Theater on April 9th at 7:00 PM, and I would love for you all to see it. We are excited to work with the Barclay Theater based on suggestion from the city because what the performance really means is a very large-scale performance. And you'll understand what I mean in that they needed a large space to kind of inform how they felt in this performance because it was inspired by their writing, which was actually originally in very confined places. And when I say confined, I mean locked down. And then from that point on into the school, into small classes, and then the connections we would make myself with the students in the library to empower them to become storytellers. So this is the storyboard. This project took about two years to do. And so what happened was first that I had to work with the students. I came to OSEA at 2021, so this was the first time we came in person. And I knew the vision that I wanted to do. I've been a librarian for 12 years, and I've always felt that there's a mythology, there's a narrative in our communities. And in order to be empowered to tell your story, you need to know it. You need to be the person to take the lead in that performance. So when I first worked with this group of performers that are from OSEA, they were in elementary school, they're in fourth and fifth grade. One of them is probably sinking in her chair because she's behind me right now. But I found deep connections with them that reminded me of my own youth. We started very simple. What is story, right? What is tone? What are these meanings? And then I read them the stories, and it became very empowering for them to start to write down what those stories meant to them. They trusted in the stories, but we wanted them to build up to become storytellers. So what happened was, two years later, they're all in middle school, and you get growing pains when you get older, and you've been in the same school for a really long time, and you have so much to say that maybe not everybody saw. For our young people, I think COVID felt much like it was just another check-in-the-box for them, you know? While for us as adults, we were like, I can't take another day in sweatpants. For them, it was so much more of like, oh, they'll adapt, right? And then what happened was, once they realized that stories were being placed in front of them, it wasn't so simple as that. There was a lot of trauma in place, and they needed an outlet. They needed the drive to tell those stories. And they found it through class, through writing, through poetry. And some of the poetry, if you wanted to move a few slides ahead, one more, one more, one more, one more. There you go. And there's one after that, too. These are a good example of our middle school's writing. This is their birthday wishes that they worked in their English class with their seventh and eighth-grade English teacher. And it's very simple. The birthday wishes are "I wish for." And what happened was, it allowed them to dive deep into trauma, loss. Who are they? What are they becoming? What do people see, what people don't see? And it became an acting mirror, which became the core part of what this performance will be. And when I say mirror, I don't just mean physical mirror, though you'll see it in the performance on April 9th, but I mean metaphorically. Our youth have social media, and social media is an active mirror for good and for bad. And it causes quite a lot of doubts. So the narrative tells that story through three different acts, which is reflection, doubt, and acceptance, learning to accept who you are. It's very simple to say you should love yourself, right? We tell them that all the time. We tell our children that. But it's much harder to actually believe in it ourselves and to believe in it for them. And that has been kind of my life's work at OSEA. And so our youth managed to grow up, and they managed to realize that their writing meant so much that this performance would be not only their writing, but all of the entire school's writing. Even the little ones in that photo you saw, they connected deeply with an author when they were in kindergarten, and he came a year later to talk about feelings that maybe were a little hard to unpack between father and son, and they really resonated with them. And so we took the narrative of every grade, including seventh and eighth, and created a performance called "I Contain Multitudes." And so they were ready to perform. So in order to create this performance, I not only storyboarded it, but I wrote out an entire piano concerto for it, and then didn't use it because I wanted to frame it in a way that felt very personal for them, to kind of storyboard it, write the music, and then give them music that is reflective of them, a mirror for them to act. And you'll find on the performance that every element of it is a narrative, from the lights to the music to the way they dance. And it's only six performers, six performers, that are carrying the entire community of that narrative, and they understand the weight of that. There's also one that never danced before, and she's one of our strongest dancers. They're all synchronized now. I will make sure that a video comes, that we made a special video just for you all, that you get to see a type of that performance that we're not actually gonna have. Elements of it will be in the performance, but we made it special for the city as a gift. But it's very powerful. And those three acts include a solo in between. And what we basically—they asked me, as the director, they said, "Well, Mr. A, what are we going for?" And I said, "We're going for a gut punch. We're going for a gut punch. I want you to take an adult that sits there and goes, 'Lose your breath,'" which is part of the performance. They start it, and it goes—because when you feel something in your life is happening, it often takes your breath away. And it's our turn to see that because they are our city, they are our narrative. So they give a chance to let us forcefully reflect that we also "I contain multitudes." You can go to the next slide. So this is an example of how some of the music looked out. You can see my own writing on the top corner, and then some of the pieces that we're utilizing, how we metaphorically used mirrors and how we really used mirrors, how we used tones and themes and all the elements that they actually built in the core of their classes. And then within the library space, which became a very safe space for our students over the past couple of years, and allowed them to have their voice. This is—this year, each year, we focus on something very special. This year was about defining your own narrative, telling your own story. And so they became the storytellers. They're telling us the story, which is beautiful because that's what I wanted. I love that they thought that I brought stories to them, but truly, they've brought stories to me. So now you can, in the next few slides, see what that stage looks like. It's why they're not here right now, to utilize this space because they'll be using every single inch of this space, and that's partly the part of the rehearsals they've been doing. And there's a few slides of what the venue looks like. We had to synchronize every single second of the performance because every part is a story to tell. And then finally, they were ready to tell their story. So they've been rehearsing. I actually just came from a rehearsal, so I'm sorry if I sound a little tired, but I was directing. And they learned how to work as a community, work together. A lot of these kids actually don't know each other, but they found common ground in the emotions that they had. And there's one part of the performance where they have to just sort of leap. And that was one of the most challenging things, was how do you let go? How do you let go and just accept what's in front of you to face it? And I feel like I learned quite a lot from this performance, and I'm excited for you to see what two years looks like in general, yeah. We did a full rehearsal last week with the musicians, and they've begun to do their principal photography and promos as well. So if you get a couple of emails you're not expecting that say "I contain multitudes," and you're like, "What is this?" This is our full rollout of what that's going to look like. And just so you know that everything has meaning, just like in our own lives, everything has meaning, and that we find that meaning in the bricks and mortar of the cities and community that surrounds us, including Santa Ana. I left you guys a little piece of what this performance is going to be like. So I hope you all can join us, and thank you again for collaborating with us. This has been the greatest gift I've had in my career. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dustin and Pedro. Really looking forward to seeing that. I also want to remind the commissioners that you can ask questions at the very end, after our final presenter, and then you can ask everybody who's still—luckily, I think everybody's still here. And so our final presenter for tonight is from Artisia Pilar Neighborhood Association, given by Lucy Solorsano, president, president of the association.
All right. I like the clicker, too, so I'm gonna try it. Hi, everybody. My name is Lucy Solorsano. I am a board member of the Artisia Pilar Neighborhood Association. And I'd like to introduce several members of our La Raza Restoration Project Commission, committee, if you guys can just wave your hands. And we also have the lead artist here, who is Roger Reyes. So I want to, first of all, say thank you very much for providing this grant funding to our agency. This is the first major grant that we have received as a neighborhood association in the 20 years that I have volunteered. So this is our presentation. So a little bit of the history of the mural that we are restoring. It's called the Raza Mural. It's a mural that's been in our community for the past 33 years. It was created by a single individual who had attended a neighborhood meeting back in the 1990s because it was a meeting to address the gang violence that was happening at that time. So he went and he asked then-city manager to—if he could have permission to do the mural, right? And so that's how it came about. He didn't go with the intention of creating a mural. He attended the meeting to address the violence that was happening within the community. The picture here is a classic picture. We got this picture from Manny Eskamia when he was doing a presentation on Shifra Goldman, who is a pioneer in the Latin American and Chicano art. And she was a professor at Santa Ana College during the time that we attended. And right next to her is George Ruiz, who, again, was inspired by that whole Chicano movement. So this is George Ruiz in 2021, when we first got our first donation from a local church here in Santa Ana, and he was gung-ho. "Let's start this process." But we still needed a little bit more funding. But George doesn't live in the area anymore. However, his parents still do. But this is a picture of him kind of 20, what, 30, 30 years later. So this is our neighborhood mural. And the mural, because it has withstood 33 years, it's a monument to the history of our neighborhood, right? This is—this was created by someone who lived in our—who lived in our neighborhood and who was assisted by four youngens at that time, teenagers in the neighborhood, who just came out and with spray cans did a mural on the wall. And it has not been whitewashed. It has been painted over due to graffiti. It has had graffiti damage in it, but the majority of the time, it has withstood. Even with the wall crumbling, it has withstood for 33 years. So this is the extent of the damage. Our main barrier was the wall because at that time, we were being told that it was a residential wall, and so we had to get permission from the neighbors to be able to work on this mural. So, you know, over 32 years, it wasn't built appropriately. And so that's why you see a lot more damage in this area than you do in other sides of the wall. So this is our main crew. We were able to partner with Mural Colors. This is a Los Angeles-based restoration company. And then we were told by them, when we were working to form this, one of our committee members used to intern for Mural Colors, and they're leading in restoration of murals within Southern California. They actually did the first restoration at Fremont Elementary, right? At Fremont Elementary, and they're due to do the other restoration at Monroe Elementary. So we were very—and by chance, it so happens because within the Chicano community, we all know each other somehow. He went to school with my brother for a PhD program at UCLA. And the wife, Davida, worked with my cousin at Skirball Museum in LA. And so very small community within the Chicano community. So we kind of all know—we—I don't know, connected, right, in that way. So this is the process of the mural. We already completed Phase 1, which was the cleaning of the wall and the consolidation. Now, the city is gonna be helping repair the wall, reinforce it. And so we're gonna be waiting for them to complete that part of the project. Then, once that is completed, the second phase starts, which is the redrawing of the murals, the in-painting. And then that's when we have volunteers coming. Roger is leading them. We've invited the five original artists to participate, and so they're all on board. And then we're gonna be—we have—a lot of people interested. They want, you know, their hand to be on this mural. And so we do have volunteers, and they're all gonna be adults, to participate in this process also. All right. And according to the project managers, the Mural Colors, this process is gonna be really fast. It's gonna take about four weeks to completion. So it's faster than what we had anticipated. So we're excited about that. This is modern-day archaeology discovery, okay? This is what I'm calling it. And I'm hoping the video plays. Oh, it's not, no? How do I—do I? No. That picture right there with him holding the water compression is a video. Are we able to? Yeah, if you click—it should—yeah, click it again. No? Oh, you—oh, I did send the other one, too. Okay. Oh, I did—I did send the other copy, but it's okay. So if you click it, when you guys—I think I sent Tram the other, not PDF, because I wasn't sure if it was gonna, you know, upload. It's a video of a neighbor who took—because when they started taking down the paint, washing down the paint, they rediscovered the temple behind that. And you'll see Roger on the other picture. He's applying the solution that helps bring out the original paintings in the back as well as like a detergent to clean up the wear and tear of weathering. So this is—a 1991 original picture of the mural. That's one of the young guys, Steve Martinez, that participated in drawing. You have below—you have a 2016—that's a video on YouTube that someone took of the mural, right? You can start seeing that it started being colored over. And then in 2021, it's completely covered over. And then just last Friday, you have the rediscovery of the temple. That was a great process, yeah. This is another video, too. It's a great video of our lead artist, Roger, talking about the Lady Santana and a little bit of story behind that. In the video, what you capture—so in the main—in the main picture, you see the original image that was drawn. Then you see the deterioration and the damage, the graffiti on her face. And in the video, what you see is him applying the solution to eliminate the graffiti, right? But what you also see is that someone came and drew over her face. So she didn't have a face, as you can tell in the picture below. She—her face started disappearing. So somebody from the neighborhood that was passing by got a marker and drew in her eyes, drew in her nose, and drew in her mouth. And it is beautiful. And Roger said it really well in the video that the community— it really well in the video, that the community has been wanting this, you know, because they took the, someone, someone came and gave her a face, right? And so that just kind of speaks to the desire of this mural coming back alive. So it's, sorry, you can't see that. And then, so we've done some outreach. The majority of it has been through social media. We have the, the Raza Restoration Project through Mural Colors, Rogers, Facebook and Instagram, and then, of course, our own Neighborhood Association Instagram and Facebook. We have two planned events. April 9th, we'll be participating in the Park and Rec Spring Fest at El Salvador Park. And then we are still in the planning stage of what we're calling the Artisia Pilar Mural Walk. We have multiple murals in our area. So, and then, of course, the unveiling. This is a video of one of the original artists. His name is Gilbert, and we call him Gilly, and he's one of the five. And this is just him expressing how he feels. This is the first day of the project, and this is how he's feeling in regards to that. And so he's just basically saying that he's, you know, to be a part of this is, you know, he never thought. He was a kid. They asked him to, you know, write the calligraphy on the, on the mural. And he talks about how he doesn't know how to draw. So all he did was, was write on the wall, and how he feels proud to be a part of something that he sees. You know, rappers come, and they take their video. People take pictures of their classic cars in front of the video, in front of the mural. And so it's just nice for him to be a part of that. Some of the adaptations. So our contract wasn't finalized until earlier this month in March. And then, you know, we had planned to do a day of the Niños event, but unfortunately, given the time constraints, we couldn't do that. And so this is why we're looking at a mural art walk within our community. And then, of course, an outreach at the Spring Fest, and then, of course, the unveiling. Those are some of the changes. So some of the dates have changed in regards to that. Some of the reflections, this is all new to me and to, to some of the members of our Neighborhood Association. So it has been a pleasure to learn about fiscal sponsorships. I am so grateful to Charitable Ventures. They have taken a big stressor off of my shoulders by being our administrator. And so we are very grateful to them. And the biggest surprise that we learned through this whole process has been the, the ownership of the wall. So the wall has always been our biggest obstacle in that the residents, some gave us permission, others, you know, were hesitant to give us permission. And so that had always been the obstacle. And then the fact that we had to pay to refix that wall. We were, we were, we were getting estimates of the 20,000, 30,000, you know, and we're all volunteers. And so, you know, to raise that money was, is an incredible feat. So when we were told the wall is now city, city property, it belongs to the city, that just eliminated that obstacle. And this project has been flowing. You know, it's like a river when you like unleash the dam, the water just flows. So we are very grateful to the city who is willing to partner with us and, and fix the wall for us. Another of the thing is, is that we are, like I said earlier, we received a donation in 2021 by a local church. They do want to stay anonymous. And of course, grateful for the artist grant that we received. And then also, we have one of the original members who, who has created a GoFundMe account, which is still active, by the way. Okay. And, and the biggest reflection of it all is that on the first day, we had neighbors, we had, you know, people come up to us, drive by honk, yes! You know, they were thankful. They were coming up and saying, it's about time, you know, taking videos, posting them on social media, just saying, you know, Santa Ana is showing some love to this mural. So beyond, you know, all positive accolades for us starting this project. So for the future, we have some hidden treasures in our neighborhood that, you know, you may not know of. You know, once we finish this project, it kind of leads us into this direction of restoration. And so in the 1970s, Santa Ana had a summer youth program that created various murals within the city. This, these two images are original to that wall that we have the current mural on. And so those are in the back of one of the fences. We don't know the exact location. We also have this mural at El Salvador Pool Wall. So so this mural was also created by the Santa Ana Youth Commission, Youth Program in the 1970s. It was in 1976. And this mural is, goes along the side of the pool at El Salvador Park. And these pictures were courtesy of Mariana. And if you can see in the corner where it's gray, and you see the little, little dot, it's screaming to come out. That's the mural behind there, right? So it's just been painted over. At that time, they used, you know, it was, it was a mural project, so they did it, they have the mural protection over it. So it still exists under layers of paint. This is another example of, of that. So that little red dot is part of that sword under that particular window from the pool. And that's the whole image on the side. So like I said, it's there screaming to be restored. This is another mural that was at El Salvador Park Center. Inside, it was created by Emidigo Vazquez. And the, we got, there was a documentary done, and you know, I didn't know much about Mr. Vazquez, but he created so many murals around Santa Ana, and they've been destroyed, washed over. And this mural still exists in our center. And so hopefully, that can be a next project. And now we have, we have new murals. We have new murals that are being created by Marina Aguilara. And we, within the El Salvador Park, and she's using this mosaic theme, which represents, you know, rising above roses in the concrete, right? We rise above. So that's really symbolizes our neighborhood, where we're rising above everything else. We're a low-income community, but we're going to be the center of the Chicano revival murals, okay? Because we have so many in our small little area. And that's just, you know, hopefully something that we can see happen. And that's my presentation.
Thank you so much, everyone. So commissioners, I'd like to ask if you have any questions for any of the grantees here.
Well, I'm just gonna first off, just say, I am abundance. I love the resurgence of the arts in San Ana since post-pandemic, and seeing all the amazing things that are happening in the neighborhoods, associations, and the community, bringing these amazing experiences within our community, and it's, and attracting others to Santana, and all the incredible things that go on here. So thank you to all of you. We're grateful that you applied, and you've done this, and we're honored. I think I can safely say on behalf of the commissioners, that we're honored to support your incredible work. And we look forward to seeing the next things that you'll do. And I'm hoping to make it to as many of the things as I possibly can. So thank you very much. All right. Oh, go ahead.
Since I'm the only male here, I don't ever want to go first. So just, you know, seating, but I know other folks want to speak as well. Yeah, I, each, I love, first of all, yeah, congratulations and thank you for everything that you all are doing to, to promote and, and grow, and further enrich the beautiful art and culture that is here in Santana. So like, I mean, I could say a little about all of the organizations, but like personally, like Breath of Fire, you know, I, many years ago, I was part of a play called Nine Ditch Away From A Dream, where I played an undocumented person that, that ended up losing his life early. And I know that that play was actually my wife now, Yanni Diaz, was one of the folks that was collecting the stories, you know, 15 years ago or something. And so I know that Breath of Fire has touched my life personally, and so I'm just really happy that you all are continuing to do that, that great work. You know, and then, of course, OSHA with, you know, the Ballet Folklorico, and everything that they've done for years as well. It's just, you know, just really commendable, and can, you know, continue to do the great work that y'all are doing. You know, Lyric Opera of Orange County. When I go to theater, and I do, I'm a season ticket holder at Seegerstrom at La Morada. I wish we had a, you know, a place here that I could be a season ticket holder. But, okay, so there we go. Because I, I don't want to go elsewhere to get my art. And also, I'm the only non-white person in these places many times that I go. So it's really important that our community and young people understand the value of theater, of opera, of opera, of, of the arts, of that kind. So I'm really, I'm, got it on my calendar. As people were talking, I was putting things on my calendar, wasn't ignoring. You know, and OSEA, you know, just, yeah, working with the youth and working with folks during that pandemic, I think was really important. I know that there is a mental health epidemic that we are dealing with post-pandemic, with the isolation and what that did to our young people, the years that was lost. It's hard to make up for academically, but what about emotionally? Or, so the artistic venue is one that is very much a necessity and will be for years to come. And Artisia Pilar Neighborhood Association, you know, just, just amazing folks that formed that organization. And I'm, I'm happy that, you know, el movimiento of Chicanos and the long history, the folks that came before us, you know, when, that are now mentors and elders and OGs for, for us, as we are becoming OGs ourselves, and, you know, talking to the next generation, you know, it's just that passing of the baton. So I know, you know, we stand on your shoulders, and as others stand on ours, and so on and so forth. So, yeah, I love that Moises left early, but you know, he's, he's a legend locally. And so, qué bonito de Santana, I really think, just encapsulates how I feel about my city, that I, you know, I'm an adopted son of, and I can't wait for the next grantees that will, I'm sure, you know, build upon all the great work that each one of your organizations has put together. So thank you so much.
I want to say this is my favorite meeting we've had as a commission thus far, in part because there are so many faces and organizations that I know well, that I have grown up with, that my children enjoy, that I consider my friends and family. And it's such an honor to see the, how a little bit of funding from our city has blossomed into so many incredible projects. And I actually want to plug, not only, thank you for coming, thank you for sharing your work with us, please share this with your council members, because we need to make sure they understand the impact, even of these small dollars, and that they continue to celebrate, you know, Neighborhood Association projects, restoration of those hidden treasures that you mentioned, which I think we need to make a, we need to make a whole grant process around. And I want to highlight a couple pieces. One, when we started talking about creating more of this funding, we talked about how art cures. And I just want to applaud the OSEA team, dear to my heart, but you, you really lived up to that, that vision that we had, that art is a way that we heal people, that we help people see themselves, see their futures. I want to applaud Lyric Opera for also taking on the interactive piece. You, I am just so excited for this. It's going to be a great Mother's Day. But you know, I'm, I'm just a huge advocate of art that is not passive, but art is something that we, that where the people in the audience are part of the creation, part of the experience. And so this is just an honor to see how you have done, you're going to accomplish this, and that you took this on. I'm really interested to see also how our ethnic studies at San Ana Unified will also take some of these wonderful projects, these histories, coloring book. Also, I don't think you have an address on here. Maybe I missed it, but, and I know we have, I think, is Alicia was part of the, Alisa Rojas, another local artist, was a part of making this a reality. And Roger, your, your social media posts are the best. I can't wait to see the action and maybe, maybe, you know, add a dash of paint to the mural myself. Fabulous, everyone. Thank you so much for coming and sharing with us.
Well, the other commissioner spoke very adeptly, very eloquently about all the wonderful things that you all brought to this meeting. And I really want to echo all of that. Much like Commissioner Russell, I think this is one of the meetings I've smiled the most at since I've been appointed. So this has been really wonderful, just to see the, the wide spectrum of the arts that you all are bringing to every corner of our community, every corner of our city, to everyone of every level, every ethnicity, every, everything. Everyone is always included. And it really reminds me of like Keith Haring, who famously always said, the art is for everybody. And I really want to applaud all of you for coming here to show us to the impact of the work that you do. Sometimes reading the, just the applications behind the screen, it's really hard to get a sense of the impact it actually has on the community. And so this has been just wonderful and beautiful. Thank you all.
See, they all went first. And I mean, I had to go first. And then they said all the amazing things that I agree with too. And I just want you to know that I personally am a student of Ballet Folklorico. So I, I've been in a dance concert recently, and I just really enjoy, I'm part of Relampago del Cielo. And I'm just really grateful for getting to see them up close, but also being part of that community, and just all the amazing things that, the well-roundedness, and we continue. So amen to all of that. Thank you, everybody. And we look forward to seeing you again. All right. And yes, read your brain on arts. Arts is a means to well-being. So keep that, keep that going. Okay. Next item of business under our work-study session is Arts and Culture Special Events, sponsored for March 20, or sponsorship for March 2024.
Okay, thank you, Chair McNair. Yes, before you all go, if anybody needs parking validation, please see Bianca back here. Okay, so the next, as Chair McNair said, is the sponsorship. I'm going to go through all the ones. We had eight, eight recipients that were approved for funding. For, we had nine applications and eight were approved. The first one, so this is in no particular order. The first one is Peggy Iriarte for the Birds Diversity Community Mural Restoration. That was approved with five yeses and no nos. And the amount approved is $1,200. The next one is Samara Rice for Tranquil Trails: A Sound and Movement Exploration, with three yeses and two noes, for the amount of $1,500. The next one is the Cambodian Family Community Center for the Cambodian New Year Celebration, with five yeses and no nos, for the amount of $2,000. The next one is Santa Ana Lifelong Learning Trust, or SALT, for Bario banners revitalizing, oops, spelled it wrong, sorry, revitalizing Santa Ana's streets, for the amount of $1,833. The next one is Delhi Center: Empowering Through Reading, a pilot literacy campaign by Delhi Center, for $2,375. Next one is House of Deborah Jane Studios for Black and Brown in the OC, open mic discussion and music video premiere, for $1,550. And the next one is for Joey Bonzi, for Bonzi Workshops, in the amount of $1,333. And finally, Libromobile Arts Cooperative, for Loteria Musica y Mas, a Bristol food court plasm placemaking series, for $2,300. So there is still $1,318 remaining to go into the next round. And I'd like to ask how the commissioners would like to move forward with that amount. And I'd like to ask how the commissioners would like to move forward with that amount. I mean, there are some options, one of which is maybe we can split it up evenly among the those who are awarded for this round.
Amongst ourselves.
Yes. Barely have anything, but we can move it forward. Again, that's a very, very small sum, depending on how many people apply. So those are the two options.
Seeing the disparity between what people asked for and what they were awarded in this round, and I'll speak for myself, I was very fiscally conservative. I think knowing that we had very limited, I had no idea we would get eight nine approved. But I I feel like if we could bump up the sponsorship or the approved amounts, I would be in favor of that. So that, you know, a project that was expected to be 10,000 and they only get 1,000, it has a little more possibility or just stability to take it back.
Or if you have any other suggestions too of how to divide up that remaining amount.
Yeah, I just that I do think that that's a good idea. Commissioner Russell. But I just, I I think it complicates it for me just to pick which one we would give the extra funds to. So I I did the math and it's like $164 for divided up amongst the eight, right? So it's not much, but I think that's the most equitable approach, in my opinion, but I'm open to suggestions.
To clarify, I I think that was the original intent. We weren't going to just select one, but I I totally aligned with that. How about you, Vice Chair?
I'm also in alignment with like picking the small amount and splitting it up evenly among the eight recipients.
Especially because I've told everyone that the funding is gone.
And I agree with Commissioner Russell, the fact that we were all thinking, there were so many great applications and knowing that we had such limited funding, we tried our best to help everybody as much as we could. And that's just how this plays out every time. And the good ones keep happening and happening. So I hope this also will continue to be something we can provide in support of our artists, arts and culture in the community. So so Tram, do we need to vote on that?
No, no, not as I just wanted to hear your feedback.
Okay, so you feel clear on?
Yes, so we're going to divide it evenly and then give that amount to among the eight recipients for this round.
Yeah, Vice Chair.
I know this is the end of the round of the sponsorships, but there's just one thing that I wanted to flag in the potential applications for next time. For myself, I became very concerned when I could tell very easily when the applications were entirely written by ChatGPT. And so for myself, that was an indicator of not having the capacity to fully execute an application, let alone an event. So typically, when I could tell that it was written by ChatGPT from just glancing at it, I rejected it. So I just want to like notify any future applicants. If you're going to use ChatGPT, which is perfectly fine to give yourself the language and structure for some of this, but it's incredibly important to personalize it, to really make sure that it's coming from a person so that it feels like there is intent on actually carrying out the project.
Excellent point. All right. Are we complete commissioners on that item? Okay. Moving on to the third item under the work-study session is our Arts and Culture Commission Powers, Duties, and Responsibilities Presentation.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jonathan Martinez, and I am an Assistant City Attorney here with the City of Santana. I really, really appreciate the privilege to come before you all today and to give you some, hopefully some guidance on what the name of the presentation is, powers, duties, responsibilities, and also to look closely at the preeminent body of law that governs how governmental bodies work and operate in the state of California, which is the Ralph M. Brown Act. So this will also have a Brown Act training component to it as well. I'm I am remiss to say that this will probably be a little more dry than the amazing presentations that we previously saw, but it is important nonetheless. So we can just go ahead and dive right in. Does anybody need a break at this point? Because we are at beyond an hour.
How long do you think the presentation will be? If we take a break, can you turn it into an opera?
I don't know. I don't, I don't, I'm not, not really confident in my tenor voice, so we'll see. I would estimate probably about an hour, maybe forty-five minutes. I have forty-four slides to get through. Okay.
I think, yeah, we need a break.
Yeah, Bianca Carlos, Dela Rivo was in that photo. That's who he was in Mitch at Santa Ana College. He's in the bottom back. They were talking about my last Euro. That's who she was talking about. As soon as she said, she's the golden, I'm like, oh, there's Carlos again.
Yeah, I wanted to, I wasn't sure if they're allowed. But my first thought was that from here, but they were building them. That tiny little state. Abana, your other support.
So when he comes, little river was in the, he works for us. And he was in that photo. Santa Ana College. I'd seen this on Manny's, I think on his Facebook back in the summer. And I knew I'd seen that photo.
Next meeting.
There you go. I'm a little, there you go. I'm going to take you for dinner drinks to make a, make it up here. There we go. Where? I'm hungry. Yeah, my wife was saying, I don't know, like, I'm an artist. Proceeds to sit up.
Yeah. Okay, what we got through.
We'll just have to reget me and then. There you go. Yes, exactly.
Welcome back from our break. We just learned that we've lost our quorum. So to that end, we cannot proceed with our presentation, Arts and Culture Commission Powers, Duties, and Responsibilities. So we're going to move on now to the staff member comments. Tram, do you have any? Okay. She made them all earlier, right? Okay, to that end, do the commissioners get to make comments? Or, okay, commissioners, yes, go ahead. Vice Chair.
Just briefly, I know this is not an event that's happening in Santa Ana, but given the large population of Vietnamese community members we have here, I really want to promote the first ever Little Saigon Book Street event that will be happening this Saturday in the city of Belmonte, largely because the organizers could not find an affordable place to host this locally. So hopefully, maybe in the future, we can rectify that. But this is the first of its kind where there's going to be living, published Vietnamese authors there to talk about their books, to talk about events. There's going to be artists there as well, community organizations. Just really want to highlight that.
I want to share that I attended Book of the Oro with my family, and despite the weather, I was actually quite amazed that you all were able to pull that off with the very strange weather that we had, where it just sort of kept, it would rain torrentially and then stop and the sun would come out and then it would but it was a fantastic event. And I should have mentioned this earlier for the OSHA, but, you know, I have a small child. Well, I have two small children, but I have a small, a very small child, and he just, he got to meet artists. He got to create art all day long. And there's just nothing. And I just, I feel like people don't understand in Santa Ana that we have this access to artists and arts, these hidden treasures, as we mentioned. And as a final thought, I've been thinking about this for a long time, and I I would love for us to work on something where we create an incentive for people to attend multiple arts events in Santa Ana, almost like a, you know, becoming like a season ticket holder, but for different organizations. And I know that would take some orchestration, but I think it might be a great way to help people see the breadth of the arts experiences that are here. Because if you're, if you don't see the social media or you don't get the email, you know, these amazing events sometimes go by and then you just hear about them. So I'd love for us to try to figure out a way to be more cohesive in how we celebrate and showcase what Santa Ana can offer.
Do I hear you volunteering to chair lead something like that?
I am, yes. I am volunteering.
Yes. Okay.
Who would like to join me?
Let's talk.
I hear I hear a second volunteering, volunteering happening. So great.
Well, and I I hear it so, I'm sorry, are you complete? Okay. I appreciate that you're saying that because one of the things I'm really thinking about is we are about to hit our tenth year in the of our Arts and Culture Master Plan. And so I've been working with Tram and Commissioner Vu and now past Commissioner Rivera. Yeah, Martha, former Commissioner Rivera. And we were working on that infrastructure, and I still want to continue because I feel like we need to fold that into the bigger strategic thinking of what does this commission do in the future as a ten-year plan, you know, is it's coming up. So what all that entails and the process to think about that, what's unfolded in that plan and the infrastructure. So perhaps this is part of that conversation. And maybe we could just fold you into to that work. So I'll talk to Tram about that.
But just so you know, I think we're meeting
Going to be on a plane. Anyway, well, it's it's fine. We can figure that out. So thank you for your comments about Bogadaero. It was successful despite I Santa Ana's having some interesting weather. We were the epicenter of that whole weird hailstorm thing that was happening. That's so yay, we're attracting some interesting energy. We'll put frame it in a positive way. And I just, again, I'm with you. We smiled. I've smiled all night long, and I love it when we get to be patrons as we build a literate community who will enjoy and and attend these events that people are working so hard to share, and we commune and connect through these things. And also when we engage ourselves, like in just my experience in dancing, I feel like I'm coming into my better self, you know, and and the community is beautiful and all of these things that we know the arts do for us as humans. So I want to encourage everybody, I don't know if it's closed, the budget input for the city. There there's been links posted in social media. That's still open, right? Okay, perfect. So we get two great presentations. Could you turn them into opera? Oh, not together. Okay, okay. So that said, thank you, everybody, for participation this night. And this meeting is now officially adjourned. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April eighteenth at 5:30 PM.